So, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, February 19, 2019. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustee Charlebois, can you lead us, can you lead us into prayer, please?
Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Lord, in the midst of winter, when the days are cold and wind can pierce, remind us of the warmth of your love. In the midst of winter, when days are short, dawn comes late and dusk arrives early, remind us that in the darkness your light still shines. In the midst of winter, when the flowers of spring still lie hidden in the earth, when leaves are off the trees and the world can seem bleak, remind us that Easter is but a short time away. And when in our lives we feel as if we are experiencing a season of winter, reach out to us with your power of, with the power of your resurrection so that we may feel the warmth of your love and see your light that alone can take us away from the darkness of
There was a motion regarding property, was it regarding property that was adopted in Vice Chair Murphy, can you read the information received in camera, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Summer school principals, 2019. Marie Murad appointed elementary school principal, 2019. Gino De Luca and Paul Malia appointed as secondary school principals, 2019. Mark Freeman's term as secondary summer school principal renewed for 2019. Acting department head, religion, social sciences, and humanities. Angela Bryson appointed as acting department head, religion, social sciences, and humanities at Jean Vanyer Catholic High School, effective February 4, 2019. Teacher hiring. Calissa Morales and Cody Thurlo hired as probationary teachers, effective February 1, 2019. Madison Mederos Furtado and Jessica Namie hired as probation teachers, effective February 4, 2019. Chantel Conway hired as a probationary teacher, effective February 11, 2019. Sandra Clark hired as a probationary teacher, effective February 12, 2019. Anita Nixick hired as a probationary teacher, effective February 15, 2019. Resignations. Anna Maria Bertoni resigned, effective August 31, 2019.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. On the approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve? Trustee Duarte, Trustee Agnew. All in favor? Motion carries. Any declarations of interest? There are no declarations. Presentations, there are no presentations this evening. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of February 5, 2019, regular board meeting, can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Trustee Duarte, second. Trustee Carabella. All in favor? Motion carries. Business arising from previous minutes, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. The table in your package includes the running list of the matter spending from previous meetings. Moving on to action items. Religious education resource selection.
Chair, I have a question regarding item seven.
Question regarding?
Item 7.1.
Yes.
We have this running list, and there are lots of items on that list. So, I was wondering if you could put a date and a completion date on a couple of items. Item number two on that list, November 20th, response to the delegation. I was wondering if you could set some target completion dates on that, as well as the last item there, extended friendship at St. Matthew's, the report is due. These are open-ended, can we set some kind of target so we can complete it in a timely
Superintendent Crowe, or do we have a, somebody to address the question? Secretary Daley.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If it pleases the Board, we'll come out with specific dates of the next meeting, in terms of the follow-up.
Sounds good, thanks.
So, item, item 8.1, religious education resource selection. Religious education resource selection, Superintendent Prakashen.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. This report is a follow-up to the staff report at the previous board meeting and is the action report that recommends, and the purpose of this report is to recommend, the purchase of the Grade 6 Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ Complete Print and Digital District Implementation Package to support the implementation of the Ontario Catholic Elementary Curriculum Policy Document, Grades 1 to 8 Religious Education. In the report before you, we've provided background information along with comments about the components of the Grade 6 program, as well as the expenditure summary for all of our Grade 6 classes and students throughout our board. And the conclusion is that the recommendation is to purchase Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ, the comprehensive resource package, as the approved Grade 6 Religious Education Program Resource, with the intention of continuing to purchase the resource grade level all the way to Grade 8 over a three-year period. This will ensure that the new catechetical learning and teaching resources for all Halton Catholic District School Board Catholic Elementary Schools align with the Ontario Catholic Elementary Curriculum Policy Document, Grades 1 to 8 Religious Education, and have the approval of the Assembly of the Catholic Bishops of Ontario.
Thank you. I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the purchase of the Grade 6 Core Religious Education Complete Print and Digital District Implementation Package, Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ, in the amount of $247,042.85. Can I have a motion? Trustee Duarte, Trustee Zarnota, seconded, discussion? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So, the ones for Grade 8, are they already completed, but we just haven't purchased them?
Through you, Mr. Chair. They are in the process of being written and completed, and the publication dates, the proposed publication dates are in front of you. So, no, they're not available for purchase yet. We've been purchasing as they have become available to us. Thank you for the question.
And just to follow-
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up to that, do you find that we have, there is a mechanism of feedback, or have we received feedback on the current issues that they could put into the future issues, or is there any feedback that we're getting to address things, or what different things could be added or different, whatever? Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The writing teams that are assembled by the Catholic bishops, along with the Institute for Catholic Education, do readily go over the material over time to ensure that we're current and in keeping with the curriculum documents, as well as the teachings of the Catholic Church. So, there have been and will continue to be supplemental documents provided as, as they are required over time. So, we do have very positive feedback from our teachers about the friendly usability of the digital, as well as the print copies, and everyone is very much enjoying them. And certainly, at the pleasure of the Board, at any time you would like to have feedback from our staff and students, we'd be more than happy to provide it. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Prakashen, will there be one of these student packages for every student? Is that what you're aiming for?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, our aim right now is to look at our projected numbers of Grade 6 students and ensure that every student has access to a print copy.
Any more questions? I will call for a motion to approve. Trustee Antomasi, seconded. Trustee Zarnota. I'll call for a vote, a registered vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Mazan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Herrero?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
The following item, there are no staff reports. And on the item 10, information items, student trustee update. Trustee Charlebois.
So, for our update this week, first of all, I'd like to welcome our student senators here to the board office. For many of them, this is their first board meeting, and it might be a little bit intimidating, but it's always new, nice to branch out and see what really goes on outside of school. All these student senators here are possible candidates for the student trustee elections that will be coming up later this, this year. So, we, the senate meeting we had tonight was mainly focused on just covering the role of a student trustee, what we do, pros and cons, you know, missing school, things like that. My favorite part, but, you know, that's life. We also did a quick debrief on the See the Problem, Be the Solution initiative that happened in November, to get a sense of what senators enjoyed, what they didn't, and how we can hopefully make some alterations for the better for the future. As well as during our in-camera session, the student senators covered some ideas and some sort of finalizations on what they'd like to see with our hopeful Indigenous initiative. So, we'll discuss with them what, what they talked about, so that we can get down to all the, the final plannings and really get things rolling for that initiative. Furthermore, the student trustees will be attending the Osta Eko Board Council Conference this weekend in Ottawa. So, at this conference, we'll be spending a lot of time with our Catholic student trustees. We're going to be split up from the public ones for a substantial amount of time, to really focus in on what's going on in, you know, Catholic education, with the new government, as well as in our different boards, as well as targeting what the Catholic Board Council of the Student Trustees Association would like to do in the near future. There's a lot of big, big events coming up, one of them Catholic Education Week and things like that, so that'll be discussed. As well as, there will be a, a large, a large portion of time dedicated to addressing mental health, which has become a big, a big target of interest for the Ontario Student Trustees Association. It was, it started with the Student Trustee Platform released last year, and has continued into this year. One of our keynote speakers will be a municipal politician from Ottawa, a gentleman by the name of Alan Hubley, whose 15-year-old son passed away due to suicide from depression. So, we'll have a large, a large amount of time focused on how we as student trustees and as an association can really address mental health in all students across the province. And furthermore, of course, student trustee elections are coming up this spring, so we're getting things all ready to submit the applicants to Mr. Daley. I know they're due March 5th or March 7th. So, we're, we're very excited to see, to see what's in store. I mean, all of you will, will get to know the, the select students very well, and we've got a great set of candidates who really have some great, great areas of interest and advocacy.
Thank you, Trustee Charlebois. Any questions? No questions. Item 10.2, school education field trips. Superintendent Crowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to present the information report on the approved educational field trips that our elementary and secondary schools will be taking from February 27 through the end of June. The majority of these trips are the traditional Grade 7 and 8 trips that many of our elementary schools undertake, along with some co-curricular opportunities for our secondary students. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustee Agnew.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Just curious, from a cost perspective, for those students or families who are not able to afford those trips, how do we handle that?
I mean, the simple answer is that any child who wanted to participate and financially couldn't participate, it would be on the school to find a solution to that. So, our schools are very good at working with families quietly to ensure that no child's, you know, left behind.
Trustee Duarte.
Trustee Agnew took my question, but would ask the same question again, in a different way. It does say here, "All proposed trips have been reviewed prior to approval and consistent in board policy agreement." So, the cost, again, it's, it's very high, and if you have two kids in the system, like I do have two kids in the system going to trips, it's very, very expensive. But, as you said, as Superintendent said, parent, every child would get the opportunity. There are parents who would not like to go and say, "I cannot afford," but they'll, they'll suffer and do that thing. So, what is being done, basically, to make sure that those prices are the best prices available out there, and what can be done to reduce those prices?
Sure. So, I, I mean, the short answer is lots, to be honest. I mean, schools work really hard with approved travel vendors, to make sure that they're getting the best price. They'll often work sort of within a budget. They'll often cut things out to make sure that, you know, if the costs are getting too high year over year, they'll cut back. I know some schools have gone to a reduced number of days, as an example. They've sometimes changed the location based on changing demographic within their own school. Another thing that schools will often do is they can help space out the payments over long periods of time to make it more palatable for families. So, the short answer is this, that, I mean, I can speak for myself as a recent elementary school principal. We think long and hard about the trips, about the educational religious value of those trips, but also about the impact on the demographic within our community and whether it's appropriate. And like I say, school communities often change trips after a couple of years, based on feedback from parents, but again, we're not going to make, we're going to make sure that any child that wants to go can go.
Trustee Duarte.
Just to follow up. In order to subsidize those trips, what are we doing in schools? Are schools running their own fundraising programs, or something like that?
Yeah, some, I mean, school will be a little bit different, but definitely schools will do fundraising where it's appropriate, to try and help offset the costs.
Sorry, just to follow up to that question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, would that be something like a school-generated fund? Would they be able to utilize those in that capacity?
I, I mean, again, the, the challenge is trying to find a balance in the amount of times we ask the community for money, right? So, we're always thoughtful each year about the, how many times do we reach out to the community, ask for help, and also trying to leave space, or if there's something unexpected coming up within the community, that they're able to raise money as well. There is also the Halton Children's Education Fund that we do access from time to time for, to support families as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowe. The next item is Superintendent Merrick, who's going to update us on St. Nicholas Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the construction report for St. Nicholas for the month of January. The site prep has started on the site right now. It's been very challenging over the past few weeks, the weather, doing the site grading and surface removal, but we're proceeding nonetheless. And coming up for the next month, we'll start with the footings and then relocation or installation of underground services over the next month, before we get into the actual above-ground build. And have you taken any questions that trustees may have on the St. Nicholas project?
Any questions? Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I believe the next, the next item is also yours, and that's an update on St. Mark Catholic Elementary School.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the construction report for the St. Mark School Edition Project for the month of January. So, we're nearing completion on this project. We're hoping to have occupancy this week. We still have a few small items left, some handrails that were fabricated incorrectly that are coming in over the next couple of days, washroom sinks, and then the outdoor fencing. Again, the weather's been challenging to get the fencing done outdoors, which has to be done for occupancy, so hopefully wrapping that up this week, and then move-ins will happen over the next month. And I'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the St. Mark project.
Any questions? Next item, 10.5.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Assumption Catholic School.
So, presenting the construction report for the Assumption Project. Again, early days on this project, but demolition has started inside the school. We're making good progress at this point, and, you know, we have more major works starting over the next few weeks, as we get further into the project. So, there's some very rough pictures there showing some of the demolition, but we're well underway at the, at the site there. Happy to take any questions from, from trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. The next item is the Halton Student Transportation Services, 2017-18. I ask Fred Devoe to please speak on this item.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. This report is something that you'll see on an annual basis around this time of year, and it's when the Halton Student Transportation Consortium releases their annual report, providing the Board with an overview of how they've done this year, what were some of the past achievements that occurred. It gives you a little bit of metrics on how many students are being transported, the average distance to stop, bus utilization, so how well are we using the bus, or the seats on the bus, as well as provides the auditor general, or the auditor report on the financials of the Halton Student Transportation System. And again, that is a consortium between ourselves and the public Board, where we work together. So, this report, there's a covering report attached to it, and it essentially outlines where to find the report. I actually have printed copies. Unfortunately, we don't have any for the student trustees, but they seem to be apt enough on their iPads and whatnot, so you can find them online. Next year, we won't provide paper copies, I'll let our general manager know. So, if there's any questions with regards to transportation, please let me know. I guess as a general update as to what happened between last year and this year, one of the larger things that occurred was we RFP, or we went out for a request for proposal on the final 70% of the routes that we had, and now they've all been, well, we've attained our, acquired our providers. And as part of that RFP process, we managed to put in some better retention protocols for our drivers, as well as a lot more incentives to maintain driver retention. And what we're seeing already this year is that the number of routes that did not have a driver dedicated to it has been reduced drastically. In addition, as a continued enhancement, we continue to look for efficiencies in our routing. So, again, we're reducing the number of buses where feasible to, again, ensure that we always have a driver on our routes, and that, you know, we don't have any kind of, you know, empty seats on the driver's seat. So, I'm open to any questions you may have with regards to HSTS' annual report.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the Halton Student Transportation Services, the year-end statement. It shows net debt end of the year of $25,000. So, where is that money going to come from? Page three of the financial statement.
Which page is that, Trustee Duarte?
Page 15 of the book.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, at this time, our SPo is not here with us that would have a better handle on this, but I could find you the answer. Usually what would happen in certain circumstances were if we're starting the year with a deficit for whatever reason, what we would do is that revised, we would adjust that, or we would pay that balance forward with this year's budget. But again, that's my assumption. I will get you the actual response of that from HSTS.
Follow-up question. Last year, there was a deficit too, 2017, of $30,000. So, where did that money come from? Same answer?
Same answer, yes.
May I, I'll give Mr. Devoe an opportunity to, if there are specific questions on the report, I may suggest that maybe we could write them down and send them under separate Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So, all our routes are covered this year. We don't have any outstanding routes without a driver?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have a handful this time around, but again, we're always being able to cover them, as long as they're not an, like, too much of a large amount. We don't have as much drivers doing double coverage. In previous years, we had so many of them that it got unsustainable. Now, we're at a point where, you know, if there is a vacancy, we're able to fill it, or we're able to have someone else take care of it, without having too many delays. Another thing we do with delays as well is that we try to rotate them, so it's not only one school that gets the burden of it. If there is a driver absenteeism, we try to, you know, spread it around, so, you know, it, it's not always one school that's being particularly impacted.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you.
You're next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. During the election, one issue that came up a lot of times, Fred, by repairs, was the idling of buses at school drop-off and pickup. I heard that quite a few homes. In the report, it mentions stop audits. Do these stop audits, do they monitor bus idling times? Because I know there's a law that you only idle one minute in Burlington, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do advise all of our bus drivers to not idle on-site. When we do find out, we tell them to desist immediately. A number of our buses are actually tracked by GPS and have some kind of monitoring associated to them, so we can tell if there is any idling. And again, if there is idling, please advise us, and we will report it to HSTS, which will then speak with the operators themselves to stop these things from occurring. We, we don't want anyone really idling on our sites, whether it's parents or bus drivers, so we'll, we'll definitely look into it if it's an issue.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. Transportation is a, is a flashpoint for most parents. When you, when you mention transportation, you stand back and wait for the fireworks to start. Everybody wants more transportation, which means it costs more money. We have this new vision for transportation report coming out from the provincial government, which we're not sure what it contains. One would assume that it's probably not great news for us. So, with that in mind, where can we, if we have to cut, where can we cut?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is a, a good question. I will, maybe just one quick, I'll defer to a-
I'll defer to Secretary Daley.
Yeah, I, I think as we work our way through the budget process, we'll be looking at all of our operations across the board in terms of efficiencies. I think it's probably premature right now to- I think it's probably premature right now to, to single out one particular part of the operation.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr., through you, Mr. Chair. The report mentions something called utilization rate, and it's, can you explain that? Like, they're over a hundred, it's a hundred and sixty-seven for a seventy-two bus. Can you explain what that means? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thankfully, we're not stacking buses like we are going to be stacking portables. So the way that utilization works is how many students are actually on a full day of transportation utilizing that bus. Now, it's not on a single run, it's on a multiple-run basis. So a particular school bus, in its day, will have multiple runs occurring, almost like loops. So they have a start point, they pick up, they drop off, and then once that drop off occurs, then they move on to their second route. And depending on how the length of those routes and how much time it takes to complete that route, they can do between one, if it's a very long route, or up to three, sometimes even four. So when utilization, when we're reporting on that, it means that a single bus, depending on how many routes they're using or they're operating on, and how many kids are using that during the daytime and the after, or sorry, the morning and the afternoon, that's how we calculate it. So if in the morning, you know, you have a bus that has a capacity of seventy, and over the course of the day, the bus, you know, had two hundred students that rode on that morning route, they weren't all on the bus at the same time, but over those three different routes, they were on that bus, that means that that bus would have almost a, doing math right, about three-hundred percent utilization, because it, it managed to use that bus three times over. Where if you have a negative one, that's where it starts getting, you know, we're not always filling up the bus with as-of-right students, but then we may be filling it up with other things like courtesy seat riders when there are seats available, and there's no additional cost, because the seats are the seats.
Thank you, Mr. Debo. Oh, another question?
One more question.
One more question.
This question is only for information's sake. Understand that the Halton Student Transportation Services is made up of the public board as well as our school board, and it's an independent organization, right? It's an independent group that decides what say do we have in terms of moving busing around? Do we have any say in any matter, or they decide everything?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's definitely, it's not a completely separate, it's almost like a third-party organization comprised of both board members. And who sits on that board of directors would include the chair of the board or a designate, the director of education, the school board, or the superintendent of business services and treasurer of the board, as the primary voting member. So there's three and three. And essentially, they're looking at it as the overall, what's best for the overall system. Now that said, they make decisions that are based on that, which are oftentimes informed by board policy in certain matters. So there is some consideration given to what the board is doing, and then we have to respect those board policies and procedures as the consortium. So right now, we're well harmonized between the two, and the board of directors, again, always looks out for the best interest of, you know, the, the, the transportation consortium and meeting board policies and procedures. So there is some influence, but again, they are a third-party comprised of members of the board, both boards.
Thank you, Mr. Debo. Moving on to the next item. Miscellaneous information, there is no miscellaneous information, and I believe there's no correspondence as well. There's no questions, right? We don't have to go back in camera. Yes, sir.
Perhaps you could open the floor to any student senators who might have any questions about your roles.
Good idea. Any questions? Any comments? Let's not be shy. Please. Does anybody want to attempt that?
I'll take that.
Okay, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I've had lots of experience working with student senate as a, as a high school principal, and working with student trustees, both in our board and in my previous board. So I think it's important for anybody that sits at, at, at the trustees' table, whether it's staff or trustees, student or adult, that while they might be representing a particular constituency, ultimately, they're representing the whole board. So you might be a student trustee who attends Holy Trinity, and obviously, you're going to be looking out for Holy Trinity, but you've got to keep that kind of, that bigger picture as well, and ideally be somebody who can tap into the various segments of the student population to be able to speak on their behalf.
Mr. Chair, can I give my two cents?
Your two cents?
Yes.
I'll, I'll say my two cents before I say yours, all right? I think it's very, very commendable that you are in this room tonight. So fundamentally, there are, there are character traits and skills to be able to come to this, to this point, that you don't realize you may have, but you do. So I commend you and congratulate you for being here.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you for thinking about it. Thinking about being a trustee is the most important part, is the first step, and the second step is acting on it. So the trait that I look, look at is you should be willing to go where no one wants to go. Think of Star Trek. You would want to go and do things that you, that people think is difficult, so that's the most important trait to me.
Any more questions? Yes?
Do you have any advice for student senators, student trustees, student trustees?
Would somebody like to take that? Advice?
Um, sure, okay. Um, I would say it's so fun. I don't know what else I could say. It's an amazing opportunity, and you don't realize that you're in a position, how many more opportunities you have on it, not even in a position, but also in your life. It's like, it, it's supposed to be a different situation for your folks, for us to, like, think on your feet, and all the critical thinking skills, helping with details, to show that they're going to help you, like, way down the road.
I would just add one thing to that, and that's have the convictions of what you believe in and stand up for them. Yes?
I would also say, you know, speak to people who are currently in that role or who have been in that role previously. It sounds sort of like a, a gimme, but, you know, get an idea from them, what's the concomitant look like? What, you know, what is involved in a meeting? You're obviously seeing it now, but, you know, sort of what do they see their role as being? And what are sort of, you know, some of the, the challenges or some of the benefits that they've seen in that? I mean, I don't think there's, you know, a better person to speak to than someone who has been in that role, or speak to other people here around the table, and just try, really try to get a sense of, you know, what's involved, and, and then go for it. It's definitely, I think, is ultimately the goal, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I can add, mine, mine will be a nickel, not two cents. Uh, no, no offense. You don't know what you don't know, and as long as you're willing to learn and adapt, most of us around this table are new. We know a lot more three months into this than we did at the beginning. It's probably completely different than the impressions we had or what we thought our role was, but you adapt and you grow with it. And we don't know four years from now how it's going to end, but it's a process. So don't be intimidated by not knowing or, or getting out of your comfort zone. It is basically embrace it and draw on the support of those around you and your other trustees, student trustees. That will, you're all in the same boat. Nobody's an expert, and you'll enjoy the process. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Um, I don't know about the student trustees, how they, is it allowed to, um, front experience? But have you guys seen any, maybe, political changes? And then throughout the time they've been here, you could actually, how do you say it's improved, grown?
Trustee Guzzo.
So in the whole two months that we have had the privilege to work, as, as you heard earlier, some of us are very new, but one thing I can say is, is don't ever underestimate what you bring to the table. You have a lot to bring. You're our direct connection to what's happening at school, right, in, in, in your student body. And what I can tell you is, is, is it's, I'm very honored to work with these young leaders, because that's what we see, is we see them as leaders. And, and that's why you're here, right, is you yourselves have been identified as future leaders as well. And just don't ever, don't ever give up on that, and know that you, how much you bring to the table.
You know, they've earned, they've earned a position at the, at the table. We don't, I, we don't know them, we only know them for, for a few months. But in this very short period of time, I've, I commend them. They are almost, well, they are, they don't appear to be student trustees, they're, they're on an equal footing like everybody else. Their comments, their questions, their decisions reflect the maturity and the, and the depth that we, that is necessary for them to sit at the table. They've grown to, to that situation, and that's an honest-to-goodness comment. Trustee O'Brien.
I'd like to piggyback on that. In the, in the time that I've been here, I've only been here three months too, when the student trustees speak, I go home and I really am amazed at what they say. And I want to know that you have a lot of wisdom that, and they have a lot of wisdom that we need to hear, because they often see things from an angle we don't see it from. So when they speak, I'm often floored by what they, by what they say. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Secretary Daly.
I would just like to note as well that student senate, while they can certainly run things on their own, they do have some help from two of our schools' vice principals, Mr. Nally and Ms. Ellison. Mr. Nally's vice principal is Jean Vanyer. Ms. Ellison's the vice principal at Christ the King, so they volunteer their time as well to work with these students. And it's, it's a great thing, I think, I can speak from their perspective, it's a great way to continue working with students in perhaps a more positive way than maybe they interact with students, some students during the courses.
Thank you, Secretary Daly. Any questions, any more questions before I move on to the next item? Please.
What do you think if you watch the student trustees a lot, and if you just want that to be, not just to have a, to, 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 to,